Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the U.S. Republican Party Board to order. At this time, I would ask that you join me in standing proudly.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, are there any adjustments or additions to the agenda? All righty. So everyone received an electronic copy of the minutes from February the first. If there are any changes, we need to know that. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
A motion with approval.
We have a motion to approve that, Mr. Oliver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Moore. I'll pay for it.
I.
Can you post? Okay. So, did we have any electronic comments?
No, none for tonight.
Don't think there's. Okay, so we'll move right into old business. And at our previous meeting, we were discussing whether or not we wanted to change, look at possibly changing county ordinance to update the requirements for a traffic impact analysis. Maybe I have some direction to you mind to look at some possibilities for that because currently, as you well know, we only require that for a major subdivision. And we highly suggested for multi-family developments that it is not required. So, Mike, I'll just let you give us a quick overview and then we can open up the discussion.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So staff looked at three items in our research. Basically, TIA thresholds, trips in the peak hour versus trips in a day. Other local government, TIA ordinances and the surrounding area. And then the specific question from the planning board about how to account for truck traffic in relation to regular vehicle counts. So just a summary of some of the other TIA or TIS traffic impact study versus traffic impact analysis requirements around our area. So Henderson County has an ordinance requiring it for any proposed residential or non-residential development. Basically, that goes over a thousand trips per day or a hundred trips in the peak hour. And I, oh, I did put it here. And also for any residential subdivision of 100 lots or greater. Hendersonville also has a requirement for any development expected to generate 1,000 trips per day or 100 plus trips in a peak hour. So that's another one. City of Brevard was actually double that, the most lenient at 2,000 vehicle trips per day with no peak hour requirement. And it was interesting, their ordinance actually lists typical developments that trigger that threshold is 50,000 square feet of retail, 200 single-family homes, 150,000 square feet of office, a quarter million square feet of industrial or a 300-room hotel. The city of Asheville also has a TIA ordinance. Any development expected to generate more than 100 vehicle trips in the peak hour. So you can already see some are focusing on peak hour numbers, some on average daily counts and some both. Buncombe County has one, but only for subdivisions of 75 lots or more. And then, for reference, DOT has the highest threshold, which is 3,000-plus vehicle trips per day. Fletcher and Flat Rock didn't have ordinances I could find. And then in regards to coming up with some type of equation to basically account for truck traffic, I found one study that was done for a city in California, Fullerton, outside of LA, that basically equated a two-axle truck trip with two regular vehicle trips. A two-and-a-half, sorry, a three-axle truck trip with two-and-a-half regular vehicle trips and a three-X, sorry, four, larger axle truck with three regular vehicle trips. That was just one equation, one study I was able to find. I'm sure our resident traffic expert, Jeff Moore, may be able to explain about formulas, you know, because there are formulas out there that can account for truck traffic with industrial and larger commercial developments. I didn't get quite into the weeds with that, but this was one conversion factor, if you will, that I did find. The relevant ordinances I cited are attached in the packet for reference, but that's the end of my summary.
Okay, so I suppose what we need to do at this point is just ask any additional questions we have. Give Mike further direction if we want to do that. Here for my resident expert.
I'm not sure on that.
So I do have a question. Can you give some explanation to this?
I just realized I skipped over that. So Mr. Moore was gracious enough to basically put together a traffic impact trigger table for the town, you know, a draft version just for us to look at. With an approximation of, you know, how many square feet of a certain use or how many dwelling units of a certain type of residential development may trigger that requirement. So I printed out one that's in front of the planning board members. You can basically see which land uses that are listed on the left column trigger based on either daily traffic or peak hour thresholds. And this was just in relation to the planning board's feedback at the last meeting that we were honing in on 75 trips in a peak hour and 750 estimated average daily trips as our number for our trigger threshold versus some of the other ordinances you saw, 100 and 1,000. Mr. Moore also provided us with an extensive Excel table that was a much more complex version of this, but I didn't get to break down fully, but, you know, he may be able to explain that. I'd be happy to bring all this up on the screen as well.
What is the number and premises assigned to the land use type?
That's a great question. The Institute of Transportation Engineers puts out, they publish what's known as the Trip Generation Manual. It's three volumes. And then there was an accompanying Trip Generation Handbook that goes with it. And each land use is given a code. Single-family detached housing is code 210. Single-family detached townhouses, that's a new code. That's 215. So this is in, out of the 11th edition. So that's a great question. I didn't put them in numerical order. This is, this is very close to the table that we used at the city of Asheville. And that was based on 100 trips in a peak hour. And it's also based on an older version. Some of the formulas have changed a little bit. So this should be the most up-to-date. As you can see, some, some uses trigger it based on daily traffic. But usually, it's a peak hour that's going to hit. And that's all based on the use. The way this is all decided across the country, the ITU does studies. I'll go out and we'll sit and count. Take those and average them, and you get pretty much a nationwide average. The important thing is that, to me, as a traffic engineer, if I use this methodology, it's something that's accepted across the industry. So any evidentiary board pretty much accepts it as, okay, this is correct. This is what it is. It's one thing to have anecdotal data where you go and you sit and you actually count cars. But what holds up is out of the ITU manual because it's a nationwide average. So. Sir, did you have a question?
I just want to get it clear in my mind. When we're talking triggered threshold.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Great question.
If we were talking single-family detached housing. Okay, so if we had subdivision, five homes, if those five homes are going to create 70 trips a day, that's the trigger.
Actually, sir, what that, what that means is it would take 70 single-family homes to reach our threshold. It would take 105 townhomes. And it would take multifamily apartments, 185 apartments. I left, I see I've got a typo there for low rise ground floor commercial. That's mainly for a city-centered type development where you have apartments upstairs with stores downstairs. And that's a brand-new land use code there also. We're just really learning how to interpret that. So if someone came to us five single-family homes, that wouldn't trigger a TIA. If they came to us with 65 single-family homes.
So we're talking 70 homes.
Yes, sir. 70 homes would be the minimum that would trigger it. And that would be based on the PMP hour traffic. So what we see through this is the single-family home is really the most intensive. And that kind of makes sense if you've got, versus an apartment. Apartment in the downtown area, you get more people walking and riding the bus. Or you get people that may, may not have as large of a family that live in an apartment. So they don't have as many vehicles that are going out and back during the day. Also, the number of trips in a day includes deliveries, such as the manual, such as UPS or FedEx, propane delivery, oil delivery, which you probably don't see in the apartment-type development.
I was asking, Jeff, is it worth bringing up the Excel table as well, or is that just a deeper dive into the same thing?
If you like, and yeah, we'll try to keep the geekometer down out of the red zone. But what, thank you. You're very welcome. What, what the Excel table is, the Department of Transportation governs how we produce the TIA. So if the Towny Mills River says, okay, you got to do a TIA to prove that your development will not severely impact the surrounding traffic, then it falls under the jurisdiction of the NCDOT, which is good. Because that means we, as a town, don't have to hire an independent consultant to review it and tell us if it's correct and what it means. The DOT takes that. So what you see here, these are the different land uses. The variables used, whether it's individual units, such as a single-family home, or square feet, such as light industrial, manufacturing, warehouse. It also tells us how to determine the number to use, and this goes into the trip generation, whether it's the adjacent street traffic. For a single-family home, we look at the peak hour of the traffic next to the development. If it's something like a restaurant or in a, right off the top of my head, I can't remember, but if it's the peak hour of the generator, that means that during a certain time of the day, that particular use generates its highest traffic, which may not coincide with the local side street traffic. But anyway, all that's figured in and added to the TIA. One thing that I suggest that we have in ordinance is that any TIA will be conducted in accordance with NCDOT congestion management guidelines or DOT standards, however we want to word that. And that the first step is that they come, we determine as a town that a TIA is required, then they submit NCDOT TIA checklist to the NCDOT and to the town, so we can determine that they're looking at the right intersections. And make sure that they're hitting the scope that we want. And then once after that, the UTE takes it over. And they have 10 calendar days to approve the checklist. And not calendar, excuse me, business days. And then 20 business days to determine if the TIA is complete. And then an additional 20 business days to determine if it's correct. So that, that really puts a time limit out there, a minimum times 50 business days from the time that TIA checklist is submitted. To the earliest, you can expect to get the approved TIA back. But once the TIA is approved by NCDOT, it really takes all the traffic questions off the floor as far as whether or not it's going to make a severe impact. One thing the TIA does is that the consultant that provides it makes recommendations to mitigate side traffic. So if we're putting in, if, if a developer is building something and it causes the local intersections to suffer, then they have to recommend something such as a turn lane or signalize the intersection. Because now we've made it to where you just can't get out, so you must just follow the traffic signal. Once that's put in the TIA and the NCDOT approves it, that's part of the driveway commitment. We don't have to enforce it. DOT does. So that they don't get the driveway commitment. So, does that help? Any additional questions?
I do have another question. So it sounds like the, kind of the primary target of the TIA or TIS are intersections coming in and out and so forth. At what point do we say, there's just too much traffic on whatever road? You know, not, not getting out this intersection or that intersection, but.
The road itself.
Pardon?
The road itself.
The road itself, exactly. Does that come into it?
As of now, don't really have a way to recommend that or to, to discuss that because the intersection is where the backups occur. And that's easy to determine the level of service. We don't really have a mechanism yet. Now, the latest highway capacity manual, which is another three volumes, and it's even more in-depth than this. It really just covers four-lane roads and greater. It doesn't cover two-lane roads. I've had to answer the question, which was, how, how much traffic can this road handle? And everyone looked at me like I was crazy. I said, well, it's a two-lane road, should be somewhere in the equivalent 7, 8,000 trips per day. What? That's crazy. But it's not the road itself usually. Now, if it, if we're a 14-foot-wide ground road, then, then we may have a problem if we want to build a Super Walmart on it. But then again, the Super Walmart may pave that road in order to get their access without us even making that a requirement because they need the access. The new highway capacity manual is said to include two-lane roads in the capacity of two-lane roads. Then we've got something in hand, hats on. Say this is industry-accepted data that we can point to and say, you got to do this. Because we start telling a developer, you want to build this number of houses, you got to widen a mile of roadway where there may not be right-of-way. And we can start getting into issues because that's a whole other discussion about right-of-way. Not every road has right-of-way. In some cases, it's as far as you can reach with a mower. You know, the mowers that mow off the side, the shoulder mower, that's known as maintain right-of-way. I don't know of a legal definition of that. I just know what we always said. And it was whatever we routinely maintain is part of the roadway or what we can reach with one pass of a long-warp mower. Some people say, sure, that's fine. I get it. Some people are like, show me where that's made it through a court case. And I can't, I can't say that. So.
Jeff, the, the numbers you have highlighted on this, and like under the daily traffic.
Yes, sir.
Would that be the maximum? Is that what you're talking about?
That's a great question. For 105 townhomes, we have daily traffic of 750. So that would trigger our threshold. If you look at the peak hours, you have 56 and 64. That's not going to trigger. So we would have to have a lot more townhomes in order to reach the peak hour threshold. So what I did is when I made this, I highlighted the number that actually reaches our threshold. In some cases, it's 76 because I couldn't, you know, it would be like 38,323 square feet. Nobody builds anything. You know, so we're just going to get close. And what, what would happen? When a developer comes to the town, this is, I would like to to develop, I would like to build a general light industrial building. And I'm looking at building at 110,000 square feet. And Mike will be able to say, okay, yeah, that, what we need you to do is provide us with an official trip generation for that size, using the latest. And then, because you know, it's getting, it, it should trigger. But it should be the developer who has to prove that yes or no. And if they come in and they want to build 75 single-family homes, but they don't want to do a TIA, then we, as the town, should just say, okay, show us whether or not that meets our 75 peak hour or, you know, 750 or 75. And if they come back with something that says it doesn't, then we've got, we got, you can question me because we've got, this is the threshold. And, you know, I will work, I will do my best to keep it up to date. But, you know, if I get hit by a truck or something, then you can feel free to, just have them prove it. Just get a, get a traffic engineer to seal it. If they seal it, it better be right. Because that's our, our livelihood on the line with that. So you got to bring me a sealed letter saying that this does not meet our threshold. Does that help? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question for the general lot industrial manufacturing and warehousing. Was the PCE used at all or was it just?
Great question. That is just passenger vehicles. And I did look up the equivalent single-axle loading, which is what's used for interstates to determine the pavement life. Because my truck versus an 18,000 or 80,000 pounds, there's a difference. And it's about the same as what my, my found in California. It's four. Because 18,000 pounds is considered a single-axle loading. So anything under that would be one, or 80,000 pound, 18,000 would be roughly four. So I kind of like that. If we can figure a way to write that in.
I like that person.
And so then, then the, the use, the general lot industrial or manufacturing should be able to tell us how many trucks to expect to have a day. And they say, oh, we'll have 18, 18 trucks. They all come in about eight o'clock in the morning. Hey, that lines up with our peak hour, 18 times four. And that, that's the magic number that hits our threshold. We're real close to it. That's 72.
Just for general reference, do you have any idea how large the, say, Bojangles, how many square feet that has?
No.
Which helps, Bob, didn't it?
No, I can tell you very quickly.
Well, I just wanted you to know, were they required to do a, a TIA?
That was before me, so I can't speak to that, but
I don't think they were required.
I doubt it because it's just a commercial development. As long as it's permitted by right in that zoning district, it's.
So that's something under this that, that likely, I mean, I don't know if they hit the 1,500 square feet, but I would think it would be
Yeah, and something else is, say, a convenience store. And the way that's looked at is by the fueling sites. Because that's where a lot of the traffic comes from. In this case, three fueling sites. I didn't dive in deep enough to see if that is fuel pumps or if they're dual pumps, there's islands. But chances are, they're going to have at least three fueling stations, three islands. So, and that's something we can, based on the land use description in the manual, it would also say how that's moved at, so we can make somebody who's wanting to build a, a gas station or a convenience store, they should be able to provide that land use description, which tells how it's described, whether it's actual fuel pumps or fueling stations. It should be defined.
3,800 square feet.
Thanks, David.
Just about any fast food in the drive-through is going to be implemented.
Yeah.
Now, there's one in Asheville that is, I mean, you know, consideration, wherever. And as a single use, it did not reach the 100 because it was around 2,000 square feet. So it did not trigger their, their threshold. And then there's other types of restaurants I didn't really get into. There are, a new one, apparently known as fast casual. So that would be like a Mo's. So that would be like a Mo's or a Chipotle or something like that.
Quicker turnover.
Yeah, but you you still, you go in, you order off a menu board. And then you go sit down and eat your food, and people can come in and pick up and leave. That's another type. I didn't, I didn't look at that because then we'll just be too long. This is just a ballpark. And you've always got the the ability to say, bring in a note from a traffic engineer saying whether or not this meets our threshold with a trip generation. They should be able to do that, so. And I I would not recommend including this in the ordinance, of course, because this can change as the new, uh we saw that the number of trips for a single-family home actually went down a little bit in the latest edition. Maybe so. I mean, things are changing. Um I kind of like working from home. So that um.
That is a good point. In fact, in some cases, that's going to be a permanent change.
Sure. So the threshold could stay the same. And then how we get to that threshold will change based on generation of that manual in the current edition.
So any additional questions? And of course, tonight, we're just, we're just discussing that. My personal opinion is I would be very comfortable moving forward with, you know, the language using this, the seventy-five peak hour trips or seven hundred and fifty, whichever, if it either hit the trigger, so to speak. And of course, just like Jeff said, that that if if we do, if we do find that some, that a T I A is required, that that we do do it in accordance with the D O T, D O T standards and the checklist and, you know, all those things.
And that's currently done. Um as I said, we we recommend it for the multi-families. And we go through that whole scoping process with D O T, even for the the townhomes that are going to Fort Council next week, that they did the presentation to this board um a month or so ago. Um, yeah, there was an intersection, basically, we added where Cardinal Road goes up to Boylston Highway. You know, even though it would accept less traffic.
Right.
It's not an intersection we wanted them to look at, and they added it, so.
It might can actually help with the community to see that. It's not just the developer who determines which intersections. It's also the town and the D O T. And that at this intersection, impact is really not going to be that big. And people think, well, you're putting sixty cars an hour on my road? Well, not every car comes in, some of them go out. And then even at sixty, you're talking one a minute. And that may or may not be a lot of cars within the intersection of the road. But being able to look at it that way and break it down. It's not always a linear thing where ten percent of the cars are coming out in the morning, ten in the evening. It may be different based on the type of use. Sorry, that's too much. I should shut up. I'm talking too much.
Any other comments? Well, can we, can we be in some sort of agreement to to kind of move forward with drafting language? Perhaps that that would incorporate this, with this being done as a text amendment?
Correct.
I mean, I mean, we're discussing this. Do do we need a motion to do that?
We've done it in the past, and normally, just for the record, I'd like that because, I mean, it it's helpful to report to council or other boards, who initiates the whole process.
All right, so there you go.
Or going forward with the language to do all that we just said.
Okay, so we have a motion to um begin a a text amendment that would require a traffic impact analysis with our trigger thresholds being seventy-five peak hour trips or seven hundred and fifty daily trips.
And just before you all vote, just to be clear, this would also remove the T I A requirement as it stands for current subdivisions, major subdivisions, correct?
But they would be included.
They would. Correct. I just want to be clear, but I'll strike that one, which right.
Yes. Do we have a second? We have a second on paper. In your post. But that was a unanimous approval to be for that. Awesome. Thank you for all your work, Mr. Moore. We appreciate you so much. All right, so now we're going to move on to new business. Um this is a discussion of active recreation area versus passive open space requirements for major subdivisions. And um this was initiated, I think, from councilwoman Booth. And so we'll just let you give us a quick overview of what's on that.
So um at the last week's council meeting, February twenty-fourth, the councilwoman did raise the issue of the recreation area, the phase-two amendment from Mills River Crossing North, um that basically placed an active recreation area, including a playground and some playfields next to existing homes. Um and basically, council had a discussion about, you know, what different requirements might look like for removing that type of active recreation area away from the periphery of a major subdivision towards the center. We talked about distance from the boundary. You know, can it just not be on the boundary? Or if it's on the boundary, can, does it need additional screening? Um there was really no consensus, but basically, um council took a vote to send it to the planning board at this meeting um just to have you all deliberate and um have some discussion about it. And then when that's completed, you can give me some guidance. I'll basically report back to council what everyone discussed and what some general consensus is are. So a quick review, there's no mention of any requirements in the town subdivision code. Um just that there has to be open land for watershed compliance. Uh, the only requirements for recreation areas, common areas, open space in the zoning code or for some of our special development types, multi-family, planned unit developments, et cetera. And really, it's just guaranteeing that those areas exist, that they're recorded as such on the final plat and that they basically exist in perpetuity and are maintained in perpetuity by the H O A or whatever management or organization exists in that development. Um, some of them do have minimum area requirements, um of fifteen to twenty percent of the development area um being dedicated to those uses. But again, that's not in the subdivision code anywhere. Um, so it's not unco uncommon for local government regulations to require a minimum amount of open space, but it's less common, although it is legal, to have location requirements where those areas can exist. Um so just like we did with the T I A, um we conducted a brief review of some of the codes of surrounding municipalities. The city of Asheville and Hendersonville had minimum requirements for the minimum size of the area, but no location requirements. Bravard was the most robust ordinance, um which is attached to your packet, that basically had requirements for the minimum amount of space, but had some location requirements. Now, it didn't talk about feet from the border of the development. But um and again, theirs goes into much more detail about open spaces and recreation areas being split, you know, into squares, parks, plazas, traditional open space areas, et cetera. And so there were some guidance about how those should be located, and I'll just quote what I have here. Um land for recreation purposes shall be centrally centrally located so as to serve the needs of the residents of the subdivision. Shall have at least fifty feet of frontage on at least one public street. They also state that subdivision parks shall be bound by streets on a minimum of fifty percent of the park perimeter, but are encouraged to be entirely bound by subdivision streets. So without saying it can't be at the periphery, if a park's bound by interior subdivision streets, it's not going to be at the periphery because it would never meet that requirement unless they have a street going up around the the edge of the development. So it kind of meets that purpose without explicitly stating it. Um but that's what we were able to find in the local ordinances. Again, it's it's very common for municipalities to ask for a minimum amount of open space. And just from my professional perspective, I think that's something we should probably look at doing as well. Um, but there's nothing about location requirements. And again, it's less common to see that, but it is legal.
Do we have an indication of what inspired the concern? And so was it? I I the two things I wrote down, I know you addressed one, the ease of access. I mean, if it's for the community, it should have been easy to reach by all homes in the community. But is the other aspect noise, you know?
It's what brought this to where it is now is the impact of the Mills River Crossing North Recreation Area on immediate adjacent neighbors that existed there before the development.
Noise being that sense.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And also, I mean, they can, some of them can see into it, too. You know, there's no fence there. They just have the evergreen trees every I can't remember, fifteen feet, whatever it is. Um so primarily noise, but also visual as well.
I I I guess one of the things I immediately thought of is when the noise ordinance take care of that aspect of it.
Probably not.
What's that? Because we're not going to have construction after a certain point. I mean, that's been the complaint up to this point, is the construction noise. We're going to have plane noise and dog noise now, which is normal. That's a neighborhood noise.
And I think that would be the issue with enforcement. So the the recent amendment to the noise ordinance was about amplified sound, but we're talking about the older part of the ordinance, which talks about unreasonably loud noises and goes into a couple of different categories of it. That's another area in our code where we could have a a little additional guidance because unreasonably loud can mean a lot to different people. Now, if if a child is screaming in a playground for thirty minutes straight, you know, I would recommend whoever is experiencing that could probably call the sheriff's, or you know, or something similar, you know, to call the sheriff's department, you know, to to investigate. Um just as if a dog were barking incessantly, that, you know, that's another one where the sheriff's department does get those calls and does respond. But because it's a play, you know, I mean, because it's a programmed space meant for that use, it's it's difficult to typify it as unreasonable.
Right.
So I mean, you can imagine if they don't, you know, maybe ask the local court adjacent to, you know, your house and kids are out there. Balancing the walliness, what the space was intended for, so it may not be the type that is unreasonable. They would certainly hinder your ability to maybe go to sleep at a reasonable time.
Well, that's why, that that's why.
It's just hard.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. That's, but that's why I was, you know, saying we had cut off tines at one point and then, you know. Only empathize is what we decided on that.
I was uh watching that meeting, I believe it was at the planet board meeting, when that complaint came in. And it was, it was a lady complained about that, they took the playground. I wrote through there, far right-hand corner, over there, near the existing neighbors. And I think I was noticing Bravard's uh ordinance is, I like some of that where it would be centrally located in the development recommended. And I think something like that would be good with with uh would leave the open maybe for a variance if there's a good reason not to, like. If the law didn't, then wouldn't be feasible to put it central for some reason. Uh, but I like that.
And that's a good point. I mean, subdivision variances can be applied for. They are allowed, you know, with good reason. You know, if if the only usable land for that type of use happens to be, you know, near a floodplain or something at at the edge of the development, and there's no other homes nearby, I mean, that that could be a reason to go through that route. Um, I just wanted to touch on, too, you know, one thing council brought up as well at the meeting last week, you know, was if open space should fall within these location requirements as well, you know, when it was brought up. You know, um and we've seen this with other developments and even the townhome project proposed for Jeffress Road, that a lot of their open space is adjacent to the floodplain, just because, you know, and it's common to see that with how properties are laid out and and just land conditions on the ground. So again, whether this board chooses to take up the passive open space location requirement or not, just keep that in mind that, you know, topography and land characteristics do lend for open space to be located periphery more than active recreation areas. But Hollowbrook's a good example. I mean, their little development square in the park, um as far as I know, i- is more centrally located compared to what we've seen other places or in this situation.
Could it also be dealt with similarly to the way we have requirements for buffers between adjacent uh properties? You know, we could add a buffer requirement if it's an active recreation. So there's, there's more of a setback from that property line where there's other homes or even potential for other homes. Could it be, you know, dealt with that way, not necessarily maybe in addition to a requirement. Centrally, you know, if it was centrally, you can imagine that there would be homes around. But maybe something on the edge would also work if there was a certain setback or certain vegetation requirements or balm or something like that. You cut some of that sound. That may be another way to handle it.
I agree, and and that's why I brought up the fencing or screening requirement, because I mean, you know, noise is never going to go away. But I mean, a a fence or or some type of structure or a tall balm will help deflect it. That's all legal to implement, and and that's a possibility to approach it that way as well.
And I do think the issue, speaking to that just a little bit, you know, if 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 a person comes to buy a subdivision and they look at the plan of the subdivision, they know where that's going to be, and if they choose to build a house where that's designed to be, that's on them. But we're talking primarily about pre-existing homes that have no choice in that, that are being impacted by something, so. This is kind of, I think, more to protect them and to protect anyone that chooses to buy into that. The way I think, any ideas? I mean, we're not having to draft anything or making decisions. I just kind of want our feedback and what direction we think it should go.
I do have a question. So if if this is adopted and screening is included for adjacent, so you can't put it in the center, but you can put it adjacent to the edge and screening is required. Now, in existing subdivision, we can't go around saying, oh, we've got a new ordinance, you gotta comply with this new ordinance. But if the existing subdivision chooses to expand or to do something where they have to come back for a board, then at that point, could they be brought into compliance or highly suggested if they come into compliance without stepping over any lines or anything?
It's possible. I mean, um that's why we require the certificate of understanding, you know, to be signed in some form for these, especially for the major subdivision plans, because it's the developer or owner's signature saying they will upgrade infrastructure to comply based on any expansion. Um, the one more in-depth part of the subdivision code that that is meant to cover is roadways. So if they have twelve lots and they've constructed it as just a standard subdivision road, you know, forty-five feet right-of-way, certain width requirements, and then if they add another twenty-five and it becomes a collector roadway, they must, according to our regulations, widen the right-of-way, widen the travelway to comply with the subdivision collector road requirements. So that's one section that's in place now. Legally, it could be implemented. I mean, I won't lie, I think it's a little bit sticky. Just because, again, it's a recreation area. And usually with these regulations, as long as the town can point to, you know, that we're focused on securing public safety, wh- whatever those, the trigger terms are, you know, harmonious neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. As long as we can point to that as a justification, I I think it's legal. And we do have that in the subdivision code now for roads. So I guess the short answer is yes. We would just have to be careful on how to implement that. We would just have to be careful on how to implement that.
Sure, that makes sense, I just wanted to make sure that. Expectations, you you know, w- wouldn't be. Sometimes it's really hard to, um, put the cat back in the bag, trust me. And give the cat a second pill, you know, once, once something is there and existing, it's hard to go back and, um. Make any changes, but if there's a possibility, then. Yeah, as long as it's, as long as it's for you, it doesn't expose us to any liability threats.
Now, that would only apply for expansions.
Expansions.
You know, there's something called in the Molyian clause, which can apply regulations to old. Non-conforming developments after the new regulations develop. Um, it is controversial because it's. And I'll just say this in plain speak, it's the town forcing property owners to upgrade their property to comply with new regulations just because of that new regulation. Whereas the way it's written now. With the certificate of understanding in the roadway requirements is that if you expand and if you go above a certain threshold. Then the requirements apply. Now, that's outlined pretty clearly for the road standards. So if we were to do that for expansions of existing subdivisions, I would recommend some other clear standard. Around recreation area usage or, you know, number of lots that may use a recreation area. Another threshold, if you will, um, just so we can point to something a little more clear.
It may be oversimplifying, but it it seems like the the easiest resolution is to put. The active spaces. Centrally located when possible. Now, that that's the easiest, you know, if you're, if if a developer comes into. Something knowing that's the case as they're designing it in the first place. When feasible, again, the topography and all those things, that's, to me, seemed like the simplest. Choice, understanding that when it's not feasible. That they could look at a variance, you know, if there's a reasonable. Justifiable reason to put it elsewhere, and for the 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 passive open space, um. What what generally is the minimum that you've seen from most developments, since we don't have a minimum requirement at this time?
Just in terms of acreage, you're for for major subdivisions like acreage. Off the top of my head, I mean, a couple acres, um.
So is it like a percentage of the total?
Yeah, but a- at this point, it's all for watershed compliance, so I i- if you're in. The southern part of town and you're in the upper Frenchwater River watershed. You can only develop, and I'm gonna point this off the top of my head. Um, so these aren't exact numbers, but let's say you can develop thirty-six percent of your property with new impervious surfaces. With no stormwater controls and not to seventy-five percent with engineered stormwater controls, which can be very expensive. Mills River Crossing does have stormwater control measures, they're underground containment systems. But they are also, in order to comply with these regulations, have to have a certain amount of undeveloped land left to stay under that percentage. Um, so the Mills River Crossing South, the phase three. Of their whole subdivision development, they have about a six point four acre. Recreation open space area that's along, I can't remember the creek, but the creek that goes under Turnpike Road just before Warlick. Um, so that's one example, that's about. Forty-eight lots and six and a half acres of open space. With maybe an acre more, because again, there's some areas within stormwater easements around these underground. Stormwater detention capsules, if you will. Now, Mills River Crossing North, which is phase one and two of their whole subdivision development. Um, again, soft top of my head, but their recreation partial parcel, the one we've been talking about, the phase two amendment. Maybe two acres, maybe an acre and a half, and then there's a couple acres. And I think two or three parcels around the development that have been left undeveloped. For watershed compliance and stormwater reasons.
And that's another point as well, you know, should the open space be contiguous? Acreage, or can it be, you know, have a little plot here and go a little plot here and they add up to the total?
Well, and with and with Mills River Crossing, the north side, phase one and two, they didn't even call it open space. It's it was just an undeveloped lot that they had a stormwater control measure on underground. Um, this was triggered for me by a previous question, but. I'll just say, um. When developers see the rules, there are some who will look for ways to work around them. And I will just caution that, you know, when drafting or thinking of regulations. You know, I do think a multifaceted approach, um, allows more flexibility and covers all the town's bases. Because if you just say, well, it can't be adjacent to, well, what if they create a. Fifty-foot wide by hundred and fifty-foot long parcel on a plant and then have the recreation area that. You know, just inside of that, so it's technically not adjacent to the border and only fifty feet in from the development. Just something to consider.
Any other thoughts? So what what is your impression that town council would like from us after tonight's meeting?
We have one member in the audience who who may want to chime in, but a- a- all I was told is that, you know, this is something they're considering for a tax amendment. And, you know, since this board oversees major subdivisions, you know, they wanted to put this before this board before taking any action. And and are looking for some feedback, so I'm looking for some general direction. Um, to be able to report back to them, because they're looking for guidance. Anything else?
The conversation that that gave rise to the Mills River Crossing. My question is, have we had any other examples of this being a problem with other subdivisions in the past? I I don't recall one. I've I've never really been hit before.
I do think though, as as we continue to see development and we continue to see more and more houses. Now, we I think we would prefer to be proactive rather than reactive and not be apologizing to. A resident who lived here before for something that was not in place to protect their rights, so. I think that we should should look, I I prefer the central location of active recreation areas. Um, and I do think that rather than just. Saying open space, that that perhaps it needs to be. Usable open space, or it needs to be clarified that it's it's, you know, the trails or the whatever, that something is actually usable by the residents in this in a certain amount. That's just me.
I like that information that you set out, uh, as far as examples to look at, the one that said. Open space criteria, this is what the case of land for recreational purposes. Shall be centrally located as to serve the needs of the residents in the subdivision. Something like that, I think, would be good, along with the option for a variance. If, uh, there's some type of problem where they could.
So you're saying keep the wording more general, but by saying centrally located, we're excluding the. The borders.
Yes.
One comment, I have a thing that I can stated. The proposal in the subdivision, have all this on the proposal, well, that's fine. But I think it would need some protection, I think this what this all. Gets back to for existing homeowners here, sitting right, right there. We need some protection for them, because they're already there, they can't move. That that's my own problem.
Do you feel like you have enough feedback from us?
Kind of, I was. All I, I mean, uh, add more if I'm not catching it, but basically. To summarize what I've heard, the the planning board agrees with this. Feels that active recreation areas should be centrally located, but I've not heard specific. Language about what type of regulation, um, should do that. And and that we're less concerned with. Passive open space, and maybe there shouldn't be a requirement, location requirement for that at all. Is that correct?
Yeah, here's a question, if if it's approved, um, in this. Three quarters of an acre along the edges passive open space. And then the homeowners association says, hey, we've got some extra money. It's been in a tennis court, do they have to come to the town? And get a permit or a a playground or something that can become active? Um, would they have to come back here and then the town have the ability to say, well, actually, that's supposed to be passive open space, we we don't, you know, you can't bore this, you're a court of lords.
So no zoning permit would be required possibly, because we only issued those for structures. But because it's a regulated town subdivision, this actually goes to the, um, major subdivision public notice requirement text amendment that council actually passed. Um, we talked about major modifications triggering that requirement, and again, I don't have the exact language. But one of those triggers for a major modification is changes of use. Um, so if an area is going from passive recreation or just open space to a programmed area. Just like with what happened in this example, it would be a major subdivision amendment, we need to have to come back before this board. And as of now, public notice letters and assignment be put out.
Well, if we had this in place that said that. Active should be centrally located and they had this piece out on the periphery, they couldn't put it there because it would not be allowed.
That's where, that's where the ge- that's where the. The more general language can be tricky. What is centrally located mean? Um, that's hard to define exactly, so if you have. Again, using the upcoming townhomes as an example, you know, if you have twenty acres of open space and maybe. An inner part of it, or or I don't know, is going to be programmed or changed to an active recreation area, you know, what's centrally located? Maybe it's halfway out, you know, is if it is a hundred feet from the border enough, is two hundred feet? Yeah.
Do it. I was just gonna ask, do any of the roads in Mills River Crossing connect to the roads in the abutting neighborhood? No, there there's something, there's something coming.
With, um, some type of a a strong buffering language? So that it's not just a row of evergreens, but. Something that would really cut down on the noise, would that be? Worth putting in if it's they're not able to centrally locate that to use, so. This is, you mentioned it here, it's in here, um, for fencing, et cetera, just a way so if our. Then is the board that we like is centrally located, but well buffered or not. Just kind of like, uh.
That's allowable, yeah.
So I think what the other powers that be dealt out the eastern really located like this.
I think that's smart.
Perfect. But certainly, you know, we may see this again, I'm well aware of that, so, you know, and that's okay, too. The more we hammer it out, I guess it will be a better, hopefully, better product again. Okay, so we are going to move on to additional items, and I think that's when Austin would like a moment.
I know most of, I guess, and I just wanted to come and say thank you for your service to the town. I know whenever I sat on the planning board behind here. We didn't see a lot of council people in meetings or or. And that's okay, but sometimes you're tasked with jobs that weren't. Very, uh, how should I say, glamorous? And you sometimes you spend a lot of time on recommendations, so don't go anywhere. But, um, your your effort is always appreciated, and I just wanted to kind of tell you all. So if you ever have problems or anything, everybody's down my level. If you don't, just call me though here, I'll share as you got it, so. Just, I just wanted to kind of say thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Any, um, additional items or updates that you would like to share with us, if you could, um. Give updates on the items that we sent to council, their likes, maybe, and the results of those.
One step ahead of me, so, um. At the February tenth meeting, um, council denied TXT twenty-one oh five, which was the conditional zoning text amendment. I think that was a three to one vote. Um, as I said previously, council did approve TXT twenty-one oh nine, which was the major subdivision public notice requirement. So that is now in effect for any applications coming forth, not any that are currently under review. Um, just an update on a couple subdivisions, the cottages at Roper Farm subdivision, this board approved, um, on Banner Farm Road. Um, they've had some delays, I've not issued the staff approval, was if you remember, there were a couple of conditions that they have the Army Corps permit and some of those other permits and the preliminary plat ready. Um, they're still waiting on the Army Corps, because as you remember. There's a compared to a lot of the other subdivisions, we've seen there was a fair amount of stream and wetland disturbance there, so they're really scrutinizing that. And that's one of the reasons they haven't gotten to the point of getting approval yet, so. Just an update on that, um. I had previously said, I can't remember if it was December or January, that phase four of Mills River Crossing. Would be coming before this board and upcoming meeting, that's being delayed as well due to a lot of stormwater review comments. Um, I'm still waiting on revised plans from them, and and I'll just state and I'll leave it at this, there's been some disagreements on whether. The pedestrian sidewalk requirement for subdivisions of over a hundred lots applies across all Mills River. All of Mills River Crossing, because with phase four of the entire development, there are the hundred and fourteen lots and this requirement's triggered at a hundred. That's all I have.
Where is phase four?
Um, Mills River Crossing purchased land directly, should probably just pull it up. Directly west of the north side of two eighty. I'll share it real quick. So here's the south side, this is phase three, the north side up here, which is phases one and two. This is identified as. Phase four. So it's proposed to be nineteen additional lots. They also own this parcel, which would be phase five, which could be twenty-five to thirty additional lots. And then this application hasn't come before us yet, um. Give me one second. But I just did want to make you aware that they have purchased the Follam family property, so this is all land owned by Big Hills Construction, which is the developer. Of Mills River Crossing, you can see the developments, uh, we've approved that are in here. There's some land just outside of our town limits here, but they have closed on the Follam family land, which is, oops, sorry. Not good without my mouse. Come on. Which is right here. That is. About three hundred acres of land, and that doesn't include the backside, which is actually outside of our town limits that they've purchased as well. about three hundred acres of land, and that doesn't include the backside, which is actually outside of our town limits that they've purchased as well.
Oh, Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You have a large piece of property there, sound like a lot of homes. Uh, at what point do we consider like a stadium or infrastructure impact of, how much more growth and like water and sewer systems to handle them?
Are you talking specifically about like drinking water and wastewater? Those are all controlled by the separate utilities, so um, they would actually, I believe, have to do a water line extension to get down to this parcel. Um, because currently, I think they extended public water to the Mills River Crossing north and south developments, but they all have septic fields, there's no public sewer that those were required to connect to. The town in the subdivision code does have a connection requirement. And again, I'm just pulling the number off the top of my head, if you're over a certain distance, let's say fifteen hundred feet, you're not required to make that extension, because it's considered too much of a burden on the developer, you know, to ha- to handle that whole cost. So with this, they would most likely need to extend the water, I mean, down Boylston Highway to this development. I don't think they would reasonably do that with any public sewer, just because it's so far, and they never did that for any of their other developments. But that's controlled by Hendersonville Water, they determine if there's the available capacity. Uh, Metropolitan Sewerage District of Buncombe County is the uh wastewater provider. Um, and then just in terms of, you know, runoff or stormwater, um, you know, since we've taken over watershed review from the county as of, uh, I think it was May of last year, that's all reviewed locally now. So we've contracted with an engineer who looks at that as well as myself, making sure, you know, they're staying below those percentage thresholds, you know, within the watershed.
Anything additional, and and just a comment on that, you know, we do, I think we all look at that, just go, there's a lot of houses, it is. But, you know, the way that we're set up, you know, if if I had three hundred some acres to sell and I had nothing to do with it, I could sell it to whoever I wanted to, just like those property owners can do as well. And so that's, that's, that's the way it goes. And I don't have three point five million of it, so. Um, and also with with the development, I think Mills River Crossing is all the same developer, correct? It's just different phases of Mills River Crossing.
That's how I've always interpreted it.
All right, so that that brings us to that time, we have an April fifth planning board meeting that you can put on your calendars.
I have one quick comment, like, thank Randy for coming down, and I could suggest of fellow board members that attend council meeting or at least view it online, and you know, that just works both ways, like Randy said.
And they do have a special meeting on Thursday to unselect the newest council member to fill Mr. Snyder's spots, so feel and join in and see who the additional person will be working with is. You can do that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn by Mr. Foster. Have a second by Mr. Wiggins, all in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned, thank you guys.